It is now six o'clock. I will call this regular city council meeting on February 27th to order. If you rise and raise your hand, we'll have a conference. Thank you, Father. Thank you for today. Thank you for the many blessings you've given us all. Thank you for the beautiful weather today. Be with all those that are sick and traveling. I'll be with our servicemen and our police departments in EMS. In Christ, we pray. Amen. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Janine, if this is time, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Next, we will have introduction to new city employees.
None.
Next, we will consider an approved minutes from the February 11 special meeting. There are no additional corrections. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes as ready?
I'd like to know if any approved minutes is ready. Second.
Motion has been made by Kenny, seconded by Ben. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we will consider an approved monthly departmental report. If you have a question, please identify the page.
I have a question. It's on the handout. We got the graffiti going around town and like the graffiti at Crescent Park. Do we have any updates when it might be cleaned up?
Um, right now, I don't have any estimates sometimes, but I mean, we need to start on it. Something that has yet to be cleared. But we've got a few that, you know, we've covered over. We're trying to catch the guys, but haven't been able yet, been enough, really, to get them.
So do we have a plan to get it cleaned up or what are we going to do with it?
On the...
We got dumpsters, we got trash cans, we got stop signs. All that's just at Crescent Park. Also, all we've got...
We've got two houses there. That's about the house park is on, graffiti come too.
Yeah. We've got, we've been taking, uh, people requesting too for our help on that too. We've got sheet they fill out so we can do it, but haven't got to either.
I think discussing, you were talking about the city government property.
Yeah, like Crescent Park.
Well, yeah, right. That too, we just haven't got to do it. Um, I'd say we could probably get it all covered over in probably a week or something.
Okay.
Same part of that, they need to cover it over and not give the people who do it, take care of this, obviously, come back, we should probably do it.
Has it stopped from the rash of it a month or so ago? Has it stopped or are they still tackling these stuff?
I haven't seen any new things. Um, I just actually noticed this look today and I noticed, uh, that HMD is really tagging in for bad on overpassing. So, like, I don't know where that's coming from or some kind of game on me.
We have a subject in mind, but there again it goes. It's two different things, what we know and what we can prove. It was interesting. He's on our radar. I think a lot of it is slowing down.
I haven't seen since we've been trying to check.
Uh, citizens haven't taken us up on our $200 reward.
Have we put that out there already? Or have we put that out there like far as Facebook or...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Speaking of Facebook, I noticed that y'all are still paying Joe Gonzalez $200 on my birthday on Facebook page. I haven't seen any updates in a long time.
Yeah, I'll probably need to look at that. I've been working over in the leveling and into some of the problems should just stop. I don't know. It's not getting updated like it used to.
On page 14 on EMS, I want to recognize Michael Jordan. Thank you for joining us tonight. He was recently recognized at South Plains EMS conference, held in love with the educator of the year for 2020. You're doing a fantastic job, as my understanding, and getting quite a reputation as one of leading EMS instructors. And that's great, as long as you remember Littlefield's always your home. But, Michael, thank you for all of your hard work and everything you're doing in there and getting a positive message out about what a great EMS department we have and for helping get new EMTs in some of these other areas. Get Michael down. I always like to see our staff members stand out in the region. Any other questions on the department hour?
Uh, Paige and I just had a question for the chief. Uh, it says citations by violation. Is that tickets only or is that going to be warnings also?
What pension?
Uh, nine.
That does include warning citations as well.
So that's the total traffic stops for the month would be 46?
Yes, sir.
There are no further questions. Can we get a motion to approve the monthly departmental report?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Buddy, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we will consider and approve a bid for the installation of a 5,000 gallon fuel tank with heating system at the Littlefield Taylor Brown Municipal Airport, Port and industrial park.
All right, that's, uh, we took bids, uh, this last, uh, month. We got a bid and, uh...
Will we skip a little bit?
I think we skipped one.
No, we skipped one.
I'm sorry. I'll go back to it in a second.
You're going to go and do this?
Yeah.
Uh, took bids, uh, this month and received one bid, um, for this, uh, fuel tank for the airport. Um, approved that as part of the, uh, the, uh, grant, grant that we did with the tax off, 50% match. And, um, came in a little higher than the estimate because of the performance bond that we acquired on the installation. Um, we'll also put in a concrete, uh, pad for this, uh, for this tank. I recommend that we approve the installation of this tank.
I have a question on number five. Says contractor will install new equipment and says customer will remove existing fuel equipment. Would that mean we are taking the tank out and removing it?
The, the fuel tank?
Yeah. Okay, we're qualified to do that?
To remove the tank?
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
It's above ground or... It's above ground.
It's above the ground.
I don't see why not. I'll make sure, I'll visit those tanks down, make sure there's no disposal to any of something. Oh, underground, you know, you've got to be licensed.
Yeah, I knew that. I didn't know about the above ground though.
I don't think there's, uh, anything that big on that. Above ground, of course, it's flattable, so you definitely wouldn't want to do anything when it blow up, but, yeah, we'll make sure. It shouldn't be a problem there, really. I'm sure it's something we can take care of.
It says we'll be keeping. What are we going to do with that tank?
What then?
It says we'll be keeping the tank. What are we going to do with that?
Well, I would figure probably like anything else, we'll, uh, scrap it.
Throw it over at the city airport or wash it?
Yeah. Hopefully don't break it off. But there are clearly no use for it because it's rusted, so we'll just scrap it, but we'd have to make sure, make sure it's safe to be scrapped.
Pump can go on, like, Renee, but it's an option if off. Correct.
Yeah, actually, the pump's probably going to be worth something, so they said we could probably recoup some money off of that. We'll salvage what there is to be salvaged.
Can you remind me how you're going to pay for this? Do we have this in the budget or is this going to be at Kelly's seat?
It's in the budget. The 11,000 match was in the budget and then the economic development corporation put in the rest of the match for the 50% match. It's, uh, about, I think it was a whole grant project for this year. She's already finished the, the gate openers that were in there and buying the bulbs for the year to the Pappy. So this is the, the last part of it. And it took up a total of, I think it was around 88,000 and, uh, 11 was what we budgeted, so we're not going to be budgeting it.
Can we get a motion to approve this bid?
Go ahead and make the motion to approve the bid for the installation of the 5,000 gallon fuel tank with heating system.
There a second? I second that. Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Eric. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, we'll go back to number eight, considering approval resolution declaring a term of post candidacy in the race for the 2020 general election, elected office, canceling the election for district two. Nitro, Janine, is there anything you have to add on that?
Not really.
Unopposed candidates. So, maintain a motion to approve that resolution. Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Buddy. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll go to number 10, execute an interlocal agreement with South Plains Association of Government to provide administration services for Texas Department of Ag, CDVG grant.
Uh, the rest of the items on the agenda are all connected to our Texas government program grant and we just received all of the resolutions and some of the things that we needed to approve tonight, so, um, we've got that in the handout, the little packet that you got just now. And, uh, I guess we just need to go through these things and approve them one by one. Uh, first one is the interlocal agreement with, uh, South Plains Association of Government and, uh, it's been different now. They were...
Maintain a motion to approve this interlocal agreement, Mr. Bagby.
So we're looking at, uh, we're looking at the packet associated with the pages now.
Yeah, and right after the minimum, uh, I guess it'd be about page six, which are interlocal.
Interlocal governmental cooperation contract or administrative services.
I just typed one at the bottom, it's about page six again. Says interlocal governmental cooperation contract.
Is that 35,000 a standard fee for this topic?
Yeah, all these fees are set by the state, really.
Is that 250,000 or whatever?
Yeah, that's the, the state's money. Ours is seven, so total of 40,000, 40,000. Of course, our 70, hoping maybe 20,000 of it we can do. Uh, 15,000, 20,000 maybe we can do within Pattenburg, not have to come up with CAG.
Is Paddy working directly with the contractor or is that just, is that just for getting the grant? How do they work with this thing?
Uh, they carry the load from, for most of the stuff, uh, all of the record keeping and reports and, and the submittals for payment and stuff. It's a, it's pretty, it's heavy. Um, and, uh, it's just increasing exponentially too because this is so much more than, they've been in the past, so much more work, so much more paperwork that daily we have something to come to that we have to do, things like this, is the way the grants are going now. They've got a new administrator and, uh, a lot of new federal stuff getting pushed down, so we have to do a lot, a lot of work. It's a lot of, I just don't know how they stay up with all the little things that have to be.
So to get the, this is actually the period that we have Spag working on this or is it actually administrative grant? Because I guess the question is, I think it's on, or is it Spag something that has a tie with this grant?
Well, the Spag writes to grants and they've got all the schools to learn how to administer them and there's, it would be really difficult to try to do this ourselves, but I just don't, I just don't think it should be done.
How many planes?
These are, it's pretty standard that in all regions that your regional people will, will do the grant administration. There are some regions, regions that just professional grant administrators, you know, for it, but, um, the downside to not getting everything just perfect is, is really not what it is. Because it possibly end up having to pay the money back.
Yeah, so they're basically going to be helping us stay compliant.
Well, having, um, gone through what we did with the last grant, there's, there's, we couldn't have got to, we wouldn't have been eligible for any of the grants if we hadn't had them written out.
Gotcha. Looks like this may have been boilerplate, so we went through and changed pages and stuff. On page seven of that, at the interest of parties, 1301, it says, "No longer the governing body of the city of Littlefield, no other officer, employee, or public official who exercises any function or responsibility in connection with planning or implementation of the water improvement project, has or shall have any personal or financial interest." That part needs to be changed to, whatever, this part is called. It's not anything to do with the water improvement project, is it? I mean, I haven't read through this whole thing, so I don't know how many of, essentially we just got this today, so I had no, I had no team to read through.
It could possibly be a report on the last grant. The self-evaluation form, possible of it.
Does this have to be approved?
Oh, wait, no. I think, I did notice, right? Who are we looking at?
Page seven?
Page...
Uh, 1301, where it says that it's talking about the location of the water improvement project. And as far as another water improvement project in consideration of this, this grant.
Oh, yeah, they might have just, yeah, they probably just messed up there.
Does this stuff have to be approved tonight? It's like, we just got this today?
Yes, it needs to be approved tonight. You know, there's some errors in it that those will be fixed.
It will?
That's the main thing is that we get the, the...
You say the interest of this part.
Yeah. I can see something in there, you know, fix it.
Might bring it up to Mitch 1301 and just ask if, uh, the pot needs to be, or if they need to, if they need to catch that. Probably for him to build this off for the last.
It's probably just a generic contract that they using out of the problem.
Which, uh, much is, which bag?
Yeah, I think that's what this is. They just named that.
Bringing up some air attention, but this is just interlocal agreements back to administrative grant, that they had all the CDVG grants up as grant threat. See any more errors that you want to address in the interlocal agreement?
I'm all hoping that these violations, regulations are correct, because I don't know. I hope they're all correct. There's been stopping off some numbers that don't, that apply anything to it. I don't know.
On what page?
Oh, you know, the 24C of our, 35s, things like that. I don't know what those, what those pertain to. They're talking about high contracting and stuff like that, uh, or just complying with, uh, complying with Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Just assuming that everything is correct, if it's a boilerplate thing, hopefully it's not messed up somewhere.
Well, you can, if you alter not, you could approve it contingent upon final review from the attorney.
So the attorney hasn't looked at this either?
They've looked at these, but they haven't looked at this exact contract. It's supposed to be the same as the rest of them.
Does the attorney usually look at these?
If we get it in time, we'll send it to them.
They usually do look at them no matter what day or what?
Yeah, but there's, I, I have never had a comment on one that I can remember.
Well, I mean, if we don't have to send it to the attorney, because it costs money to send it to the attorney.
Well, if, if you're concerned about there's being some errors in here, well, then I would recommend that you approve it contingent upon final attorney review.
This isn't to go into the state. This is our interlocal agreement with Spag. They administer nearly all of our grants and so if they have their paperwork wrong with the water instead of the sidewalk grant, you know, it doesn't affect our TDA. This isn't a TDA document. This is a Spag document. And so, you know, they'll fix that error, which is obviously probably from our CDVG grant. We just got on our wastewater stuff.
Well, the, I don't think it's really an error or not. I think it's a just lack of water play, uh, turn, you know?
Well, I make a motion to approve your local agreement. Uh, I don't know, the update, make, to verify whether that is correct or not, whatever the situation is, bringing up this particular grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, that we execute the interlocal agreement with Spag, verify if that's the correct wording of 1301. Any further discussion? None? None, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll execute an engineering contract agreement with Park Estment Cooper to provide engineering services required for the TDA community development block grant.
Well, this one actually did go to the partners before the meeting, so there shouldn't be anything in there that's a, it's a, a standard contract that the state comes up with and suits it out. So the park hill and the partners thought that, I believe, it's...
If there's no questions, can we get a motion to approve the engineering contract?
Make a motion to approve the engineering contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Ben. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll adopt signatory resolution authorizing the listed positions to sign documents pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant.
You know, that resolution was sitting there, uh, signatory. Since 8201, at the top box. Says the mayor or myself for certain documents, uh, for pay and, and stuff, that has a division in there, so they're picture.
January 11th in all grants that we've done, Mitch?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion to approve the signatory resolution?
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, signatory resolution. No second.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Ben. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll have an appointment of a labor standards officer to the TDA Community Development Block Grant.
Uh, this is going to be gen samples, which are South Plains Association of Government.
Get a motion to approve the labor standards officer?
What does that mean exactly?
They go through and they make sure that the wages are according to the date of the speaking decision and stuff. Um, there's federal law rules with this federal pass-through money that you're, each time you pay, say a guy that does concrete work, he's got to get paid a minimum amount with this grant. In other words, you can't get this grant money and pay everybody $7 an hour. It's got to be according to the labor standard decision from a lawsuit, some federal lawsuit from, back sometime or another.
You say this with, to Spag, is that part of the contract this day? Do we have to that?
No, it's true.
I'll make a motion to approve our, uh, labor standards officer.
I'll second with that.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll have a designation of civil rights officer for the TDA CDVG grant.
And this, this is Janine. Um, I think mainly that's just functions and different notices and things like that. Take the pictures of it from five foot and 10 foot.
You have to post it outside the building and take a picture of it with your phone, email it to yourself, and then two weeks plus a day later, you take another picture of it and email it to yourself. And then you notarize that you posted it appropriately, according to the fair standards.
And what are you taking pictures of? The work bench?
No, no.
The notifications and the pictures and the...
Things that are on the wall. Oh, really? Okay.
It's called jumping through hoops.
That's you.
We always smile when we do that.
You're going to be the civil rights officer, that sounds.
Well, I make a motion to appoint, uh, Janine Bellers a civil rights officer, those TDA grants.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, that we designate civil rights officer. All in... Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next, we'll pass the civil rights resolution to the TDA CDVG. This is the resolution that's required and sent to us by Spag directly.
Right, and we, we're always just to readopt the, the, um, policies to, like it says before, police department and, and discrimination on handicap and just a whole list of different things that, that we adopt. And we, we just do it every time, so it's not a case of changes or something like that, we totally, it's, um...
And it, it includes all those next four or five documents too, so...
Do you have a number for this resolution, the 2000 or?
It, wow, something.
Say something?
I'll have to go back and renumber.
7-1?
7-1, well, so we started up with eight, so it's gonna be, we've got, we've got several in here, so... Yeah, all the rest of that goes with civil rights resolution.
Get a motion to approve the civil rights resolution?
Those are self-evaluations, I don't think they're coming from, probably self-evaluation. Is that the, the, or?
Yes.
Yeah. There's seven self-evaluation things that have to do with it.
Those seven other documents go with, along with this?
Yes, changes on...
The participation plan and all that goes.
And I don't know about it, but they, uh, it's somehow better to have a self-monitoring system in place than to allow the state to do monitoring. And that's something that Spag has been working toward to get us to that conclusion.
I'll make a motion to, to the civil rights resolution, TD.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, that we pass the civil rights resolution to this man. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.